It is now four o'clock in the afternoon on March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. This is the time set by the public agenda that was posted by the City of San Luis for a public hearing for the hearing officer regarding two minor variance cases. The applicant for the first case has not made it yet, but he did confirm he was going to be here. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to exercise a sort of an executive privilege here, and I'm going to move the cases. I'm going to do case number two first, okay? The first item to be considered then is number two B in the agenda. And that's case number variance case number two, I'm sorry, two zero two five dash zero 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 seven. This is a request by Hugo Garcia on behalf of, is that Irma or? My, my glasses are real bad, sorry. Irma Baragan, property owner, for a minor variance to reduce the front minimum setback from fifteen feet to fourteen feet for the construction of a new CMU fence slash wall in the community commercial C two zoning district. The property is located at five forty four North Archibald Street in San Luis. The way I conduct these minor variance hearings is I'll ask for a staff report from a City of San Luis staff person. Then I may ask questions of the the, the person presenting the staff report. After that, I'll ask if the applicant wants to come forward and make any comments. There's no requirement for the applicant to come forward, but if they want to, they can. After the applicant is finished, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the public who's here who wants to speak to this case. I doubt if anybody's going to be here for that. Then I'll turn it over to myself for deliberation and a decision. Anytime anybody has any questions, raise your hand. I'll stop and see what it is that you wanted to say. So can we have a staff report, please? And for the record, we need to mention our name. And I think if you're representing the city, I don't think you need to put your address. We know where your city hall is, so, so please have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. As I mentioned, this is minor variance. I'm sorry, my name is Juan Larruga. I'm the Assistant Director for Development Services. This is Minor Variance Case two thousand and twenty five zero 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 seven. The request is to reduce the front minimum setback from fifteen feet to fourteen feet for the construction of the new block wall. The property is located at five four four North Archibald Street in San Luis. And just to summarize, the applicant is in the process of building a new block wall on subject property and at a distance of fourteen feet from the front property line instead of the fourteen, the fifteen feet that is required by city code in the C two commercial district. The property is a little bit over sixteen thousand square feet in size. And I, on the slide here, you'll see the, the zoning map that shows everything in red is zone C two. So most everything is compatible as far as uses, existing uses. This is the aerial imagery of the property that shows the subject property. And again, you know, development of commercial uses surrounding the property on all sides. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. It shows the property as it exists, the layout. It shows existing buildings and existing state structure. And also went ahead and showed here just a description or rough sketch of the, the, the block wall. The, the black arrows and the dashed line represents where the block wall approximately is being currently built versus what the required setback is fifteen feet. This is a picture that was taken of the property a couple of weeks ago. As you can see, the wall is currently under construction. Again, another picture that shows the wall. Just also, just to note, property is abutting the subject property, especially this building to the, to the north. You see how it encroaches into the foot, into the, the setback? That is a pre-ordinance non-conforming structure. And this is looking east from the subject property. Looking south from the subject property. And this is just a indication of where the property corner is located. Staff is recommending denial of this minor variance case number two thousand and twenty five zero 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 seven. And the reasoning is because the minor variance doesn't meet all the criteria established by the code. So staff is required to make this, this recommendation. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm ready to entertain any questions.
Is the, I know to the west, there's a significant slope there to the land. Is that any part of this property, do you know?
Mr. Hearing Officer, yes, I did notice on the aerial photography that a portion of that slope is within the property towards the rear.
All right. Is there going to be any significant visibility issues with the difference between the fourteen feet or the fifteen feet for traffic that's going to be using Archibald Street? And is Archibald Street a one-way right there? Okay, so everybody's coming from the south, I'm sorry, north going south.
Yes, Mr. Hearing Officer. As far as the visibility concerns, it's a foot difference. And as I showed, as I, as I showed on the pictures, some of the buildings are already encroaching into that setback. So staff doesn't believe that it would, it's going to create any kind of visibility issues or concerns.
How much, what's the distance from the where the property line is that you showed that picture? You don't have to show it, but is then the, the, that's where the, the city right of way is for Archibald Street?
Yes, that's where the, where Mr. Hearing Officer, the property corner pin. This side of the, the pin to the east side is pub, it would be considered public right of way.
Okay.
And to the west side, it would be considered within the private property. One thing we noticed is that the APS post is actually within the, within the property.
Okay. All right, where is the traffic ingress and egress from this property?
As you can see, Mr. Hearing Officer, access to the property, I believe it's where this, and maybe the owner can, I mean, the agent can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe access will be where the, that white SUV is parked? Or is it more towards the, to the north?
We'll, we'll wait for the applicant to get it, and I can ask the applicant that question. And my other question would be for the applicant, so is, and, and the only access for traffic is on Archibald. There's no access to the rear, to the west, right? Okay, when you come up, I'll ask that. All right. Okay, that concludes my questions for staff. And would the applicant like to come forward, please? Thank you, and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Hugo Garcia. Address four one five north, north in industrial avenue, suite F. I am the owner of HAK Construction, and I got hired to build this, this block wall. The entrance to that property, it's souther, where the forerunner is at. It is, it is, we have an encroachment, so we don't go in through
Okay.
through that area.
All right.
When we start building the, the wall, you know, we thought that we could build it on, exactly on our property line. And then they, we came, I asked the inspectors and stuff like that, and they told me, you know, it had to be like fifteen feet. So we, when we start digging the footings, we noticed that there was, there is an existing electrical pole and existing concrete slabs exactly at fifteen and where our electrical meter is at. So we moved back a foot. So instead of building the wall at fifteen, we built it at fourteen feet.
Do we have a picture of that, Mr. Leon, of that? Is that APS electrical?
Yes. I don't see. I, yeah, it doesn't show in the picture, but you see those, those orange poles right there? Those are exactly at fifteen feet, and there's three of them. So what we were trying to do here, we're trying to make, you know, that front entrance nice with the, with the block wall, you know, two gates, so we can do like little landscaping in the front. So we can, we can't have, we don't want any people, you know, just driving right there on that, on the spot, on the, on the area. We were planning to originally build the wall exactly at the property line so nobody could drive out the sidewalk and have those fifteen feet, you know, those fifteen feet, you know, for them to, you know, stop there or, you know, with their line, when you're coming, when you're going to Mex. Normally, they park their cars there, and from there, they will jump into the line. So we were trying to avoid all those issues because people leave their cars there for even a couple of days. And if we call us, if we call the, the police department, they can't do anything because it's considered private property. Okay, so we couldn't build it exactly at our property line, so we tried to move back at fifteen feet. We can't do it at fifteen feet because we have existing light bulbs there and electrical meter, so we moved back the foot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. I don't have any other question. Do you have anything else you want to say?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here from the public who wishes to address this case? This is Minor Variance Number two oh two five dash zero zero seven on Archibald Street, okay? Then I'll close the public input portion of the hearing, turn it over to myself. For, for minor variance to be granted, it's similar to a regular variance. There are four criteria that have to be met. And generally, on these kind of cases, the first criteria is the big stumbling block. Is there some special circumstance, situation or condition applicable to the property that's not necessarily applicable to the other, other properties in this area? So, and then the question number two says, is that special circumstance something that was created by the property owner? I do find there, there are some conditions that could be considered special conditions. Keep in mind, my approach to the minor variance cases is that on my job as the hearing officer is to provide sort of some leeway, flexibility to our zoning codes. Zoning codes, when they're drafted, generally are written for the ideal situation. And we don't always have ideal situations that happen in real life. And so that's where I come in. Is there some way that, that we can provide some flexibility for property owners who want to do something worthwhile, this betterment for the community, having instead of unused property, to have some property that's for a useful purpose here? And so is there some way that I can exercise this flexibility for the, for the application of the zoning ordinance? One of the criteria is that you, if the property has a significant slope issue, that you can only build on certain part of the property. That is kind of the situation here. You, you have to build closer to Archibald than to the west because it's too much of a slope there to the west. So the applicant's limited there on how much of the property they could use. Another one is the issue with these, these things that were put in by APS prior to this wall being considered and built. And I, I did drive down there, of course, I didn't drive on Archibald. I, I parked over there, a jack in the box, and I walked. And I looked around there, and I saw what was there. And I think there is a special circumstance applicable to this property, and that is those, those APS things and the slope to the property. Significant, it's enough, it's not a lot, but it's enough to give that little wiggle room that I need for a minor variance. Probably would not have been enough to do a major variance, a regular variance. But for a minor variance, I can, I think I can have a little bit of fudge factor I can exercise. So I'm going to exercise that and find there do exist special circumstances. Number two, are these special circumstances I listed created by the property owner? The answer is no. Number three, is this variance necessary for the preservation of substantial property rights? Well, I think that the, the, the variance would be very useful and helpful so that this property can be put to, you know, considerable worthwhile use. And so everybody has a, most people want to build some kind of a wall to, to set off their property line and, and the property so they can be used for a variety of reasons, safety, you know, care of items that might be stored behind that wall, that sort of thing. So I think it is a, a necessary for preservation of substantial property rights. And finally, is the authorizing of the variance not materially detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity, to adjacent property, to the neighborhood? Clearly, the answer, there is no. I mean, I guess these are all supposed to be yes answers, huh? Yes, it's not materially detrimental, it's kind of like a negative. One, one thing you look at in this picture that I have now is this yellow building. You know, that's already encroaching, so this isn't going to create any more of a problem there. So I don't see that this is going to be any kind of a detrimental to the persons residing in that vicinity, their neighborhood. Therefore, is my decision that the request from Hugo Garcia on behalf of the property owner for a minor variance to reduce the front minimum setback from fifteen to fourteen feet for the construction of a new fence slash wall in the commercial, community commercial C two zoning district is hereby granted and approved. Subject, as required by the City of Yuma zoning, City of San Luis, I'm sorry. I also do City of Yuma cases, zoning ordinance. Thank you. That concludes that item. Do we have anybody here for the, the one we skipped? Okay, thank you. All right. So now we'll take up item two A. So now we'll take up item two A. This is a minor variance case number 2025-0005. This is a request by Vienna Vega and Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Comité de Bienestar for a minor variance from the City of San Luis zoning code to reduce the street side minimum yard setback from ten feet to eight feet for the construction of a town home in the medium-high-density residential R two zoning district. This is, this property is located at thirty-seven eighty East Santa Palmera Street in San Luis. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Juan Leal Rubio, Assistant Director for Development Services. As you mentioned, this is minor variance case two two, two zero two five dash zero zero five. This is, is a request to reduce the street side minimum yard setback from ten feet to eight feet for the construction of a town home located at thirty-seven eighty East Santa Palmera Street in San Luis, Arizona. And the applicant is in the process of building a new town home on the suburb property at a distance of eight feet from the street side property line instead of the ten feet required by the City of San Luis zoning code. The property is in the medium, medium-high-density residential zoning district, R two, and because it's a subdivision for townhomes, the property size is a little bit smaller, three thousand five hundred and twenty square feet in size. This zoning map shows the suburb property and the subdivision as it relates to surrounding uses and, and density. This is aerial imagery that shows the suburb properties, this aerial image is probably maybe a month or two months old and shows the property on the corner. So it's, you know, it has your, but visibility triangles that also limit the developable, development of a town home on that property when compared to the other properties. This is the, the site plan that the applicant provided that shows in red, the ten-foot approximate setback that will be required versus what is being proposed. There's some pictures that I took of the property, maybe a week or two weeks ago, that shows the encroachment here of the part of the town home. And this picture I took looking east from the suburb property, looking south from the property, looking north from the property. And on this case, minor variance case two zero two five zero zero five, staff is recommending denial because of minor variance requests. Even though it does meet some of the criteria, it does not meet all for the established hardship criteria for us to be able to make a favorable recommendation. So, Mr. Hearing Officer, that concludes staff's presentation.
Keep that, that view that you just erased there, go back to that other view, the one that shows the hashed.
That one?
Hashed, no, the, they're going, they're going to remove part of this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that one right there. So, and that red arrow that shows that red line, is that, that's the, what setback is that at?
That, I did that as a, just a rough representation of where the setback line should be, the ten-foot setback.
Okay, so the eight-foot is that other one, those two little black arrows?
Correct.
Okay. And, and the stuff that says unit hatched area to be removed, to be out of setback area, is that my understanding?
Correct, that is correct.
It's there now because that one picture shows this edge of that building almost touching the wall, right? That's not going to be there anymore, correct?
They're going, the, if this variance gets approved, they would, they would have to remove this portion and set it back eight feet.
Okay, thank you. All right, just wanted to make sure of that. Again, this is a variance, all variances by state law required to meet four criteria. I may misstate some of them because I tend to look at them as a negative answer instead of a positive answer. I need to remember it's, they all require a yes to these four criteria, so I'll try to carefully list that. The visibility triangle that's, that's cut out, that's causing the problem here, is that something that's required by the City of San Luis traffic code requirements or zoning, the building safety department, who requires that visibility triangle?
Mr. Hearing Officer, I believe that is the requirement of the, the police, correct? If I'm wrong, Mr. Tejada, but the subdivision regulation?
That's by, by the standards, public order standards.
Public order standards.
Thank you very much. That, that's what I was looking for, okay. In other words, the applicant isn't creating that visibility triangle problem. I mean, it, it, the applicant is required to comply with that triangle, right? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hearing Officer, just to clarify, the, the visibility triangle is actually part of the public right-of-way.
Okay.
It's been dedicated to the public.
But if had not, if you look at the other properties, none of the other properties have that cut-off corner to their lots, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that, that's the idea I'm going after here. Regarding criteria number four, is there any, has there been any public outcry from any neighbors or anybody? First of all, are any of these units inhabited yet, there's over in the building stage? Not inhabited yet, okay. So the only public outcry would be the developer. Developer's not going to complain about that, right?
There's two units that are already sold.
Okay, thank you.
Not quite yet, they're sold.
All right, thanks. Okay, thank you. I have no questions from staff. Can I have the applicant come forward, please? State your name and address for the record. We're required to keep formal minutes by the state law.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hearing Officer. My name is Vienna Vega with Vega and Vega Engineering. I'm the applicant for the owner developer and I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so my one question you've already had, let's go ahead and put on record here. It is the intention of your client that all of these are going to be sold to private persons, correct?
That is correct, yes. There's, each, each of the townhomes will be, it would be sell to individual buyers and as of right now, the only one, the only two that are sold already are the ones on the south side of the unit in question, which would be the first and second unit. Those are the only ones that are sold. All the other ones are under the, the current developer.
Okay, thank you. There's no intention for either your organization or the owner to keep this one for themselves?
No, that's, is going to be, is going to be sold as well.
Okay, that, that's important in my way of thinking because of one of the criteria, okay? All right. And, and you heard my question about the portion of that part that's already built that's right next to the wall, that's going to be removed?
That, that is correct.
How much distance is it going to be from where the, from where you are actually going to have a structure to that wall?
Yeah, what's, what's going to happen is that all that corner is going to be, is going to have to be remodeled and cut out to meet the setback. And, and we're trying to keep it at the A foot because this, as you can see, these townhomes are reducing size. So by cutting the additional two feet, it becomes not a, non-functional floor plan. That area there is the kitchen and, and taking an additional two feet, it will, it will definitely not, the, the layout of the, of the kitchen won't work. So that's why we are requesting this variance to be set back at eight and with eight, that unit can be, can be worked out. The process of the construction of this, of this unit, it was oversight by, I, I don't know if you had a chance to read?
About that issue, I, I don't think it's, the way I'm thinking and what I have to look at, I'm not too concerned about who did what, when.
Yes.
I know you already were issued building permits, there's been inspections, I understand all that.
Perfect.
I'm going to try to avoid all that.
Perfect, yeah. We're just trying to get it corrected as, as best as possible and, and this year, the A foot will meet, will meet the, the fire, the fire safety requirements, which is the most critical item that we are concerned. So having that setback will help. And the other, the other, the other item that will help here is that there's no nearby structures on that, on that side as well. So, so we feel that this, this, this setback should work for the safety of the, of the unit.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody here from the public in general who wants to address this case? Case number zero, I mean, two zero two five dash zero 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 five. All right, I'll turn it over to myself for deliberation and determination and decision. All right, I'm going to look at these criteria in order here. Number one, I have to find that there exists special circumstances or conditions regarding the land or building referred to in the application, which do not apply to the property in the zoning district. This one's a lot more easier than the last one. This one, I see that visibility side triangle as, as meeting that. And again, remember, I, I don't, this is a minor variance, so I don't have to, you know, create a Taj Mahal here. I just have to come up with something that I can hang my hat on a little bit. And I think that's one of the things. So I'm going to find that there is a special circumstance. Number two, and this is what I was asking about ownership, I'm, I'm trying to lay some, some backup so you guys don't get mad at me, the, the staff that is, that above circumstance or condition was not created or self-imposed by the property owner. Well, the property owner is eventually going to be, you know, a private property owner. And the private property owner did not create this public safety traffic, you know, side triangle. So I, I find that that condition is met too, is not self-imposed. Number three, that this variance is necessary for the preservation of substantial property rights? Well, obviously, I mean, we got townhomes going in here. It's important for the public in general to have a variety of housing situations, you know, big houses on big lots, medium houses and townhomes and then apartments. So this, this is for the public benefit to have something like this. And so I think the variance is necessary for substantial property rights. Finally, the authorizing of the variance will not be detrimentally, materially detrimental to the person residing or working in the vicinity, to adjacent property or to neighborhood or the public welfare. I think one of the issues that was addressed by the applicant, of course, was that the fire people are okay with the eight-foot. And, and you don't want to have firefighters being crammed into a two-foot space to try to fight a fire. So if they're okay with it, I think that kind of, you know, makes it, makes it all right and it does meet this requirement. Unfortunately, we don't have a bunch of property owners who live here to, if they wanted to object to this, we don't, there's, there's not enough people that are bought in here that, to do that. So I don't think there would have been much of an outcry of neighbors anyway, so. I find that all four criteria have been met. Therefore, is my determination decision to grant the minor variance request for a minor variance from the City of San Luis zoning code to reduce the street side minimum yard setback from ten feet to eight feet for the construction of a town home in the medium-high-density residential R two zoning district. That's my decision. Thank you very much. There's nothing else further on the agenda. So I will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.